Okay, so now being 6:15, I will call the open session of the Plimpton Board of Selectmen on August 23 to order. We did have a brief executive session at 5:45 and now we're in open session. And pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, this meeting will be conducted via remote means. Members of the public who wish to access the meeting may join the Zoom meeting via Stop it, my dog is gonna drive me crazy. Via your computer, via audio, or both video and audio by copying and pasting the following link, which was on the agenda. There's passcode information, all of that. No in-person attendance for members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. To the best of our abilities, we will post on the town's website and the recording of this meeting is not to be considered an official public document. So first item on the agenda was going to be Old Colony Planning Council Heavy Truck Traffic Restrictions. I'm not sure if we've got Bill McNulty with us? Bill, are you here? Okay, perfect. You're here. So and we've got one other person joining us with a phone number that ends 1-876. Could you identify yourself?
Um, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, it's Carol Beck. I live at 64 Main Street.
Okay, all right. Thanks, Carol. Very good. All right. So we had met with Bill from Old Colony Planning Council a while back to originally do the the safety zones and then one of the things that came out of the safety zones was the possibility of us creating some heavy truck traffic restricted zones in the town that would keep the the heavy through truck traffic on numbered roads rather than cutting through Main Street in particular and possibly Ring Road if we're able to to work out an arrangement with the town of Kingston. So we asked Bill to come in and give us an update as to where we are in the process.
Good. Thanks for having me. Happy to be here. Again, so that was a pretty good introduction. So the study started, did start off as looking at safety zones and it's kind of spread it off into looking at truck excluded, heavy commercial vehicle exclusions are commonly known as truck exclusions in the town. Just just to kind of help mitigate cut through traffic that might be happening through the town between the state numbered routes and make kind of calm traffic on some of those roads. And I do have a map that I can share if I can share my screen for a second. Everyone see that? Okay.
Yes. Yes.
Okay. So the this map shows what we've been looking at. So we looked at two options for the town. This one is option number two, which involves Ring Road and would require the cooperation of the town of Kingston. We also looked at just Main Street alone, Main Street between Route 58 and Route 106. And then the main issue with that is, I mean, yeah, all of these roads do meet the thresholds for that Masthead would look for in considering a heavy commercial vehicle exclusion. So Main Street, through Main Street alone, I mean, that would obviously not require the town of Kingston's approval because that's completely when the town of Plimpton. But as you can see on this map, as Ring Road comes down out of Kingston, any trucks that are on that road once when they come up to Main Street, they'd have to, they'd still have to use Main Street. They don't have any way out. So it really makes sense to Ring Road as well. So, but you know, we did traffic counts on all these roadways. Actually, I shouldn't say all these roadways. Some of these roadways back in back in March, Ring Road volumes are relatively low, less than 1,000, but it did have a high percentage of heavy vehicles over 10% and speeds were a little high on Ring Road as well, have run around 42 miles per hour for 85th percentile speed. And then Main Street, Main Street was carrying about 2,500 vehicles per day. And I had a very high percentage of heavy vehicle traffic of those 2,500 vehicles between 14 and 16% of those were classified as trucks. So it does make a lot of sense for pursuing heavy commercial vehicle exclusions on these roadways, just to for quality of life residents to help improve safety, to preserve the the life the life cycle of those roadways. So, so under this scenario, the the roads that we would, you know, we would suggest excluding from trucks would be obviously Ring Road and Main Street, but also just because of the nature of how they connect Crescent Street and Upland Road. And the roadway is highlighted in blue would be the roads that you want to keep trucks on. So kind of channeling, channeling them towards Route 58 and Route 106, trying to keep them on there. The one, the one revision that I would make to this map, I would suggest also putting truck exclusions on Center and Maple, the sections that cross between 58 Main. I don't, I don't see a lot of trucks, honestly, using Maple as a cut through, but Center Street, as it comes, you know, makes that long connection to Franklin and Route 106. That could potentially be a roadway that trucks are using the cut through. They, when they come to, when they come into Route 58, they're probably taking that right, right-hand turn and then making their way down to 44. But I always, I would make that a truck exclusion as well. I wouldn't, I prevent trucks making that cut through between between 58 and Main Street. Because obviously, if you're gonna have a truck exclusion on Main Street, you want, you won't want trucks making that, using that as an outlet anyways. So that would be our suggestion from, from our standpoint. I mean, it, this, this scenario would require the town of Kingston's approval. I haven't spoken with Kingston. I would suspect that they would be receptive to it. There's not a lot of trucks using, like, there's not a lot of traffic in total using Ring Road. And a lot of those trucks might be trucks that would normally be permitted anyways, even with a truck exclusion. There's a lot of there's a lot of bogs along this roadway. So they, they might be trucks serving, serving those agricultural so they would be allowed to use the road anyways, but it would, it would cut down, cut through traffic. It would improve safety somewhat at the intersections. So if any, so that's basically where we're at. And I know that we had previously, I think, I think the last time I was here, maybe the time before that, I don't know, but one of the, you know, it was asked if we could recollect this data in the fall, just kind of follow up on it and we're happy to do that. So that's another option that we can do. We could collect this data this September or October.
I have a question, Bill. If the selectmen were so inclined, would they have the ability to take this in sort of a two-pronged approach? And maybe take a vote to pursue the Main Street exclusion for now? Possibly also including that extra potential cut through that you noted on the map?
Yep.
As one vote. And then after our discussions with Kingston, if they are amenable to considering this, then take a vote later on to do the Ring Road portion?
Yeah, yeah, you could absolutely do that. I should note that truck exclusions, that they are subject to approval from Masthead. So generally, how a town goes about it, so that the board would the board would vote to ask Masthead for the exclusion and then that they would send in all the paperwork, which you, you know, most, most of it would be like this map and the traffic council we already did. Some supporting information, most of that, you know, we'd supply to you. The only thing that you would really do as a town would be actually write the letter itself and ask Masthead for the exclusion. You know, we can provide guidance on that as well. But so the first step would be the board to vote and then then require, then ask Masthead for it. And then Masthead would either approve it or deny it and possibly, you know, if they, if they reject it, they might say, you know, I consider this or consider that. So
Okay. So if they, I guess my follow-up to that would be if, if they were inclined to vote tonight for Main Street and also for the additional little cut through that you noted. Is there any problem or does Masthead tend to look on these proposals more favorably or unfavorably? Like if you come back for a second bite at the apple, say if like, you know, it took a bit maybe to communicate with Kingston, but if they were amenable, does Masthead frown upon that, like coming back twice? Or is it almost advantageous in some ways to kind of separate them out?
No, they wouldn't frown upon it. We've had, you know, we've had towns, you know, request a truck exclusion and they get it and then they realize, oh, maybe we should have added this road as well. So they go back and they end up adding a road. So now they certainly wouldn't frown upon it.
Okay, so if they were to vote then this evening, that's something that you could help us compile kind of the backup documentation for?
Absolutely.
Great. I don't have any other questions.
Mark or John? Do you have questions for Bill?
I, I don't have a question. I am totally in favor of the Main Street exclusion, the Maple exclusion. And I would hope we'd go full speed ahead also with the one where we need Kingston's approval. But if we could get started on the others and at least get that part done as soon as possible. This is not a tremendous inconvenience for the truck people. And I think the quality of life in town, especially on Main Street, this is just a no-brainer as far as I'm concerned.
So I just want to make sure I'm clear on this. We're going to exclude truck traffic from Main Street. We're going to exclude it from Ring Road if Kingston agrees. Now, what's on Ring Road is basically the bogs and the transfer station. I'm not aware there was a lot of traffic cutting through to Kingston, but maybe so. And the other piece we're going to exclude is Center Street. Is that right?
Or it's, it's
I thought it was Main Street, Crescent Street, Upland Road, Center and Maple.
And then go back for the second time for Ring Road.
And then go back for the second time for Ring Road.
Okay. And once we exclude them, what happens if they continue to use it?
Um, so I, most, most trucking firms would have avoided, because they, they know that, you know, they're getting caught. Try, if they're not, if they don't have a purpose to be on that road, they know that, you know, the can carry heavy fines for using a road that's, that they're not supposed to be on. So they would generally try to avoid it. There, there's the GPS systems that they use. So if Masthead does approve a truck exclusion, they'll put it into their state database and the trucking firms, most of the trucking firms, their GPS, they use that as a layer. So they'll, they'll know right off the bat not, not to use this route. It's the, you know, independent truckers, they, you know, they, they might not know. And it, I mean, you know, full caveat, it is difficult for a law enforcement officer to, if they see a truck, if, to be able to tell if it's, you know, a truck that's coming from that bog or from that transfer station, or if it's a truck, you know, that's just cutting through.
Okay, I that answers my question. I assume, you know, with cranberry season, that it'll be, the police officers will use discretion.
Yeah, so truck, trucks that do have a purpose on the road, they can absolutely still use that road. So the trucks using, the trucks going to those bogs, I mean, they, that would be considered a legitimate use of the roadway and they, they'd be allowed to use it or even like, you know, say like Jordan's furniture, the drop, they're delivering, you know, living room set to somebody, they, you know, that they'd obviously be able to use it as well. So any, any truck that has legitimate business on the roadway, they would still be able to use it.
Thank you.
Bill, what kind of timeframe do you think we're looking at for DOT approval of this?
In the past, they've been really, they've been really quick. It's, they usually, it's, you know, they, they usually get back to the town within a few weeks or a month. It may, I know in the past, the past year, it's been a little bit slower just because of COVID and staff kind of working remote remotely, but you know, they, they've decided to go back in the office. So I just, I suspect it wouldn't be that long. I would suspect a month at the most.
All right, are we ready to, to take a vote?
Yes.
All right. So I'll make a motion that the town of Plimpton seek the heavy road or heavy truck traffic restriction zones on the following streets, Main Street, Crescent Street, Upland Road, Center Street and Maple Street.
Second.
All right, we've got a second roll call vote. Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes. All right. Perfect. All right, Bill. So what do you need from us?
Basically, you know, I have everything I need. So I, you know, I can, all that supporting information, I can get that to you probably in the next week.
But could we have a second motion asking Bill to move full speed ahead with seeking Kingston permission for Ring Road exclusion as well?
I think we have, we have a meeting coming up. Myself and the Kingston Town Administrator, I'm going to ask both chiefs to sit in and both highway department supervisors to sit in. And I know that Christine Joy, I believe, reached out to the Chair of the Kingston Selectmen. So we have already reached out to them and hopefully we can get the, keep the conversation going and figure out pretty soon if we're going to be pursuing that.
Liz, would it make sense to have Bill in attendance at that, that meeting?
I can, Bill, I can loop you in on that. We had said that we'd set something up for the people that I mentioned within the next couple of weeks or so. I'm happy to include you in that.
Sure. Yeah, if you can send it to me. I am going to be away for a couple of weeks, but if I'm not there, you know, Charlie and Mary will be happy to attend.
Okay, I'll definitely loop you in on that.
Okay.
Mark, do you want to keep your motion, but that, you know, it's in that the town administrator and the appropriate parties are?
Perfect.
Okay, all right. So Mark's got the motion that we pursue the, the same road closure in, on Ring Road, working with the town of Kingston through the appropriate town officials. I'll second that motion. Roll call vote, Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes. Okay, all right. Very good. Well, thank you, Bill, very much. We appreciate all your efforts on this and we'll, we'll be in touch to work together to, to go to Mass DOT and hopefully get this first exclusion. And then in the meantime, be working on Kingston with Ring Road.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
All right. So the next item on the agenda, we've got Christine Kelly here to talk about adoption of updated financial policies and procedures. So Christine, did you want to take the lead on this?
Thank you, Christine. So basically, I'm just looking to put our procedures in writing per the auditor. It's something he's been asking for, so I did so. And it's only on turnovers to the treasurer, which is monies that comes into my department. And the second is on grants. So it's just putting our actions, you know, onto paper so that we have something to fall back on.
All right. Any questions for Christine? Mark or John?
No, I had a chance to review it and I'm, I'm okay with it.
I'm thrilled with this. And I think the more we get policy written down, the clearer it will be, the easier it will be. I'm embarrassed to even bring this up, but I had one minor miracle thing as a sort of parentheses. So say Susan Ossoff, in a brotherly, sisterly sort of way, we argued for years about commas and semicolons, particularly if John wasn't around, did John Wilkinson to join us on that? So I'm sorry to even bring this up, but in the document in two places, the word receipt is italicized. And I think it, it shouldn't be. I mentioned this to Christine earlier in the day and I think she was okay with that. I'm really sorry to even bring it up. Just, just to make a really great document, even greater, I mentioned that in passing.
Message received, Mark, and it will be corrected tomorrow.
Beautiful. Well, yeah, I concur. We've been asking to get things in writing for a while and appreciate you taking the lead and getting this done. So I'll make a motion that the Board of Selectmen adopt the, it's what the turnover and and receipts?
Turnover and receipts to treasurer.
Okay, turnover and receipts to treasurer policy and the grant policy. Would that be accurate?
Correct.
Okay, and the, and the grant policy. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, second, Mr. Russo, roll call vote, Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes. All right. Thank you, Christine, very much.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Well done.
Okay, so next item on the agenda is approval of the Agreement for Services Regarding the Townhouse Roof Project. This is with Habib and Associates. John Wilkinson, did you want to speak to this?
Yeah, we talked about it at the Town Properties Committee on Wednesday night and we're, we would appreciate it at the Selectmen. Go ahead and take care of the contract.
All right, any questions for John? Okay. All right. So I'll make a motion that the, the Board of Selectmen approve the Agreement for Services with Habib and Associates for the Townhouse Roof Project. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, second by both, roll call vote, Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes. Okay. All right. So next item, now, now, do we all need to sign that agreement, John?
No.
Okay.
So I, I'll get it out and I'll have it in the office later this week. I think I'm meeting with John Trainer on Wednesday. So I can have John.
Okay, great. That sounds perfect.
Happy to board.
Awesome. All right. So next item on the agenda is Agreement for Grant-Funded Services. This is the MVP, Winnetuxat River Corridor Open Space Project, which is, looks like it's being funded by SERPAD. So do we have Linda on here to talk about this one?
Um, I don't believe so.
Okay.
Just a continuation of the project that they were already working on. It's basically Phase Two. And we do have the grant money already in place from the Taunton River Stewardship Council. So they just need the formal contract signed by one member of the Board of Selectmen so that they can officially proceed. But we do have the funding in place already. And it's completely grant-funded through the Taunton River Stewardship Council. And SERPAD has been involved.
Beautiful.
And I would just mention essentially what this does is give us Bill Napolitano, the Trails and Watersheds Program Manager for another year. Bill is amazing in knowing everyone, knowing all about grants, is unbelievably patient and kind and holding our hand. And this is great that we get him for another year.
All right. So I'll make a motion that we sign the, the contract proposal with SERPAD for their services on the MVP, Winnetuxat River Corridor Open Space Project. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, second, all in favor, I'm sorry, roll call vote, Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes. All right, very good. All right, we're just flying through this. So looks like this one just required one signature. Liz, I can sign it if you'd like and then just scan it back to you on the signature page.
Yeah, that would be great.
All right, very good. We'll do that later. Okay, so the next item on the agenda was proclamation that September be designated as Suicide Prevention Month. We had received some requests from Plymouth County, their Suicide Prevention Coalition to, for this, for the town to make this adoption. I sent a amended document to John and Mark. Basically, it just kind of got rid of some of the language that made me think it might be kind of an unfunded mandate, which I thought it was, you know, good stuff, but it was requiring or asking the town to take some action that I didn't know if we were in a position to do at this time. So I don't know if you're all right with the modified document, which is basically the top of it is all the same, but the, whereas they were just, it was much shorter. So do you want me to read you what I've got and see if you're okay with this?
I read it and if you're comfortable with it, I'm fine.
Okay. What about you, Mark?
Same.
Okay. All right. So I'll read the proclamation. So "Whereas suicide is the 10th leading cause of all deaths in the US and the second leading cause of death among individuals between the ages of 15 to 24, whereas in the US, one person completes suicide every 14 minutes. Whereas it is estimated that 5 billion people in the US are survivors of suicide loss. Whereas an increase in the overall suicide rate in our country was seen in 2019, representing a change in the recent pattern of stability or slight declines. Whereas suicide is a community problem and thus therefore must be a community response through various initiatives to reduce suicidal behaviors. Whereas the Plymouth County Suicide Prevention Coalition, which is dedicated to reducing the frequency of suicide attempts and deaths through education, awareness and action, urge that we as a community recognize suicide as a national and state public health problem and declare suicide prevention to be a Plymouth County priority and encourage initiatives based on the goals contained in the National Strategy for Suicide Prevention. Therefore, we, the Plimpton Board of Selectmen, do hereby designate September as a National Suicide Prevention Month in the town of Plimpton, Massachusetts." Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, second, Mr. Russo, roll call vote, Mr. Trainer?
John, you're muted.
Sorry. Yes.
Okay, Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes. All right, very good. So we'll, I'll sign that one too, Liz, and get that off to you. So you can get that over to Plymouth County. Okay, so the next item on our agenda is to rescind all prior appointments to emergency management. So I'll make a motion that all prior appointments to emergency management are rescinded effective immediately. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, second, roll call vote, Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes. Okay. All right. So on to appointments. We've got, I'll do this in a, in a, two groups. So the first one is on the agenda, the front of the agenda. It's Conservation Commission, Michael Mattern until 6:30, 22. Historic Commission, John Wilkinson until 6:30, 2023. Veterans Agent, Roxanne Whitbeck until 6:30, 2022. Veterans Agent Roxanne Whitbeck until 6:30 2022. And Emergency Management Director Stephen Silva indefinite. So do we have a second to those, a motion to make those appointments?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
And Mrs. Joy, yes. Okay. All right, so the next group of appointments. I'll, I'll read these off. So to note, Agricultural Commission, looks like it's all vacant. Area 58, we've got Mark Russo until 6:30 2022. Board of Registars, Gabe Lundgren until March 31st, 2024. Jeffrey Montello until March 31st, 2023 and Mary Neckles, Nekus, I'm sorry, Mary Nekus. Until March 31st, 2022. Bylaw Review Committee, Dave Alberti until dissolved, Gene Cohen until dissolved, Amy Cronin until dissolved. Linda Letty until dissolved, Kimberly Russo until dissolved, Ansel Beluski until dissolved. Kenneth Thompson until dissolved, Alan Wheelock until dissolved. It looks like they have one vacancy. Coordinator of Races is a vacant position. CPC Deborah Anderson until 6:30 2022. Richard Burnett, 6:30 2024. Nancy Butler, 6:30 2024. Irving Butler, 6:30 2022. Judy Dudley, 6:30 2023. Mark Russo, 6:30 2023. Jane Schultz, 6:30 2024. Justin Shepherd, 6:30 2022. And there is one vacancy on the commission. Conservation, Richard Burnett, 6:30 2023. Amy Cronin, 6:30 2022. Linda Letty, 6:30 2024. Michael Mattern, 6:30 2022. And there is one vacancy on Conservation. Council on Aging, Nancy Butler, 6:30 2023. Michelle Lanes, 6:30 2022. Dot Martell, 6:30 2022. Mary Lou White, 6:30 2023. And David Ziole, 6:30 2024. Cultural Council. Heather Sonda, 6:30 2023. Elizabeth Wesley, 6:30 2023. Jennifer Zenoli, 6:30 2023. And there are two vacancies on Cultural Council.
I'm sorry, didn't we appoint Nate Side?
He expired.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we already did Steve Silva as, well, we can do it here. I manage, Emergency Management, Steve Silva, Director, and that's indefinite. Jason, Harry Jason Jr. Park Study Committee, Robert Doucette, 6:30 2024. Jaclyn Freitas, 6:30 2022. And we have one vacancy on that committee. Historic District Commission, Stuart Chase, 6:30 2024. Charles Nickerson, 6:30 2024. Jonathan Shaw, 6:30 2022. Historic Commission, Rick Burnett, indefinite. John Wilhamsen, 6:30 2023. Jane Schultz, 6:30 2024. And there are two vacancies on that committee.
Yeah, just, just to make a note on there, I spoke with John Wilhamsen a little earlier tonight. For our next meeting, we'll want to get appointed to it or reappointed. Justin Shepherd and Jennifer McDonald.
Right.
The event that there's any sort of filings with that commission, we would need to probably hold an emergency meeting. With the quorum of the board to get those to that. But otherwise, we can do it on September 13th. I'd be more comfortable with it being on the agenda. So I just wanted to make note of that.
Right, thank you.
The other thing that needs to be noted on this, because it looks like we have a quorum, we don't. Rick Burnett is an associate member appointed by the commission, not by the selectmen. And so.
Okay, he showed, he shows up on the town clerk's records. Nancy gave that.
They did it, they did it wrong.
Spot is non-voting.
Yeah, but there's.
That designation.
The appointment is by the Historical Commission, by, by, by. Mass General Laws, so the Historical Commission appoints associate members because they're non-voting.
Okay, so that's interesting. All right. Off there. Let's take him off our list, Christine. And we'll just make a note on there to leave a slot that just says Historical Commission Appointed Member.
Okay.
It's really important because he serves a consulting function for us and he has no, he has no decision making ability with respect to any demolition delay. So we don't want him in that position.
Being counted as that, I get that.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, all right.
So I just, just to get the minutes right, we're taking Richard Burnett off this list for now?
Yes, yes. So I was gonna start again. So Historic Commission is gonna be John Wilhamsen. Until 6:30 2023. Jane Schultz till 6:30 2024. Open Space, Vicky Alberti, 6:30 2024. Linda Letty, 6:30 2023. Gavin Murphy, 6:30 2022. Jane Schultz, 6:30 2022. Alan Wheelock, 6:30 2023. And there are two vacancies on Open Space. Recreation, Jeffrey Haas, 6:30 2024. Amy Hempel, 6:30 2022. Kevin Kopp, 6:30 2022. Katrina Player, 6:30 2024. Eric Player, 6:30 2024. Town Properties Committee, Nancy Butler until dissolved. Ross McPherson until dissolved. Let me say Ross E. McPherson until dissolved. Colleen Thompson until dissolved. John Trainer Jr. until dissolved. John Wilhamsen. Still dissolved. Wage and Personnel, Dave Bugby, 6:30 2023. Elise Lyons, 6:30 2022. Alan Wheelock, 6:30 2024. And finally, ZBA, Dave Alberti is an alternate until 6:30 2022. Carolyn DeCristofano, alternate, 6:30 2022. Suzanne Jefferyan, 6:30 2024. Ethan Stiles, 6:30 2022. And Colleen Thompson, 6:30 2023.
Christine, could, could, just for the minutes and to make sure there's no confusion at all. Back at the beginning, did you have people on the Agricultural Commission, which I don't have on my list?
No, it is vacant.
All of them are vacant.
All of them are vacant, no names.
And I, I did reach out to a couple of people who, Linda Letty had actually suggested that I reach out to a couple of people. Who she believed were on it. I did not hear back from either of those individuals. And the third person in question was somebody that Linda thought was on it, but couldn't recall the name. So I think we're better off getting kind of fresh from this. And I'll let Christine finish talking, but.
Okay, so, and this is, this is my motion. The motion to affirm the list of Board of Selectmen appointed board and committee members. That was posted with the agenda, including any board or committee member, member appointments made this evening. As to the official list of the Board of Selectmen's appointments to board and committees effective this date. And to be utilized moving forward, noting that any individual not on this list. But possibly appearing on prior lists or records are considered to be formally absolved of their duties. From said board committees and the term and dates. On the list are now deemed the official term and dates is voted by the Board of Selectmen. Do we have a second?
Can we just amend that to clear up John Wilhamsen's? You know, on the Rick Burnett?
We, you voted, well, part of the vote when you were discussing it, you already removed him from the.
Okay, okay, my error.
Yeah, yeah, so I reread that and, and he was not included in that, that vote. So we had a motion and a second, roll call vote, Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes.
And Christine, can you get the motion to me? I missed a couple of the words.
You've got it. Okay, and here's a follow up to Mark. In the event that someone believes they were mistakenly omitted from the list, please get in touch with our office. And we will gladly consider appointing you to the Board of Committee if there is an open seat. Also, if there is a board or committee not shown on the list, as maybe they didn't, let me see. Also, if there is a board or committee not shown on the list, as maybe they didn't meet regularly or were established quite some time ago. But have otherwise been inactive, please let our office know. We will add that board or committee to our list and appoint members accordingly. Okay, so I will definitely get that to you, Mark. So that is all of the. The appointments. All right, so we need to vote to reaffirm naming the Town Center Campus Committee. Formally known as the Public Safety Building Committee to the Town Properties Committee. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. I'll, I'll make a mo- motion to reaffirm renaming the Town Center Campus Committee. Which was formerly known as the Public Safety Building Committee to the Town Properties Committee. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, roll call vote, Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes, okay.
Um, just a quick question to go back to the vote you took to affirm that entire list. Who seconded that? That was Mark. Okay, so Mark seconded that and Christine made the motion.
Yeah, I made the motion, yep. Okay, so the last thing on the agenda is, is to vote to confirm attached list as the official list. Of BOS-appointed Board and Committee Members as of 8/23/2021. Including any prior votes regarding boards and committees taken at this 8/23/2021 meeting. So I'll put that in the form of a motion. So I'll make a motion that we vote to confirm the attached list. Which was on our agenda, attached to the agenda, plus the appointments that were listed on the front of the agenda. As the official list of Board of Selectmen-appointed Board and Committee Members as of August 23rd, 2021. Including any prior votes regarding board and committees taken at this 8/23/2021 meeting. So we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes. Okay, all right, lots of housekeeping tonight.
And you'll get that motion to me as well.
Yep, definitely. Actually, that one's on the front of the agenda, but I will definitely get that to you. Cause I did tweak it a smidge, so I will definitely get that to you. Okay, so Liz, on to the Town Administrators Updates.
So we are in the process of closing out the latest round of Green Communities Grant Funding. And we're working with the Denet officials. The custodial staff has been really helpful as far as getting us photos of the work that was done there. We're also getting photos of the other projects and we're working with Old Colony Planning Council. On putting together our final grant funding report for this last cycle. If we can get it filed by September 3rd, we'll be eligible for the next round of funding. Which would be great, because maybe then we can pursue the Boiler Project at Denet that we kinda had to put. Put to the side for now due to cost increases and everything. I think that there's a real potential for our vendor to come back out, reassess what that cost would look like. Cause it's increased since COVID. That was part of the issue with it, even though it was gonna be grant funded. It was based on 2019 cost estimates and everything changed because of COVID. So I'm hopeful that in working with Old Colony, that we can get that final report put together and filed. And hopefully apply for this next cycle of funding to get that Boiler Project done. So that's what's happening in the Green Communities world. The Hazard Mitigation Grant is just about ready to be closed out as well. Our consultant is putting the final touches on the report, including any public comments that were received. And then we'll be waiting for FEMA and MEMA to review said report. And they'll get that to us if they have any adjustments that they would like made. We're also, we've been working, our financial team on some policies and procedures. Around ambulance filling and that's something that I expect we'll be bringing forward to this board. With a suggested process for writing off some of those uncollected amounts. So more to come on that. That concludes my update. I don't have anything in correspondence. Brings you to your consent agenda.
Thank you, Liz. Okay, so on the consent agenda, we have the minutes of August 9th. Did John and Mark, did you get a chance to read those?
I didn't see a problem.
I'm good.
Okay, all right, so, and warrants paid. We had two warrants that were paid. The first one is for $692.34. There was a, two Verizon bills, an MCI bill and Lynch, Marini and Associates. And the second warrant was $225.58. That was WB Mason. So do we have, I'll make, actually, I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Do we also, we also have the minutes of August 18?
They were not on the agenda, Mark. I think we're gonna have to hold them.
Great, okay.
Okay, so, do we have a second?
I'll second the consent agenda.
Okay, roll call vote, Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
And Mrs. Joy, yes. Okay, very good. All right, so we're on to. Rants and raves. Anyone like to go first?
Well, I, I have a resident rave, which is really nice because it means somebody's watching us. This was a resident dropped by, wanted to give a shout out. Given COVID and everything, the parents and seniors, the signs that were around town. For the graduating seniors, they thought that there should be a rave for that. Especially during this COVID season. It was a very strange year for those seniors and all other pupils, so. Uh, one other thing I have, which. Just share with you, the librarian, the director of the library has approached about maybe having some. I call them birdhouses, but bookhouses around town. You've probably seen them in other towns where they put some books in and they're free. You take a book, you leave a book. And he's willing to buy two out of the library money and put them in. And then if there's any interest later, maybe we can get the Boy Scouts to do something. But I guess the question is, who should we be talking to about where we put these two? Birdhouses, bookhouses, if you call it. He mentioned maybe one on the green. We do have a book display in the townhouse. Where you can grab one, but, so we don't have to answer tonight, but if you have any thoughts, I'd like to share it with them.
Thanks, John. All right, Mark, do you have a rave?
Yeah, I have two, two raves out of the meeting tonight. Number one, not done, but the progress on the truck exclusion. I think is a real quality of life thing and I'm excited about that and hopefully progress continue. The other progress, it's, it's slow and it's been an incredible challenge. But coming to clarity on our appointments, procedure and policy, I'm glad we're making progress on that as well.
All right, my rave is for our financial team, what a great job they're doing. We've got some new people in there and they are working through the auditor's recommendations. And how nice it is to see some policies and procedures that are coming out of that, that, that are overdue frankly. So it's great to see them addressing that, those issues so that we won't see them in the future and it does. and it does just protect the town financially, so it's, it's good that, that they're addressing these. So I believe, Mark, are you attending an event on September 11th that the fire department's having?
Yes, I will be there for the the, the program, yes.
Okay, and John, are you attending as well?
Yes, I am.
Okay, great, so, so that will be a nice event. It's the, what is it, a September 11th, like memorial-type service, and then they're gonna be, town officials will be there. John, I think you were gonna go too, weren't you, John Wilhamsen?
Yeah, I'll be there.
To talk about town properties, great, so it'll be, it'll be a good event. So our next meeting will be following that, which will be 9:13, and then we're also scheduled on September 27th. So we will have a little bit of a break and meet again after Labor Day. So thank you all for attending. Have a great Memorial Day, Memorial Day, Labor Day weekend, and, and we'll, we'll see you all in a couple of weeks. All right, good night.
Good night, everyone.